And I'll turn on my microphone. And what's first?
Your worship disclosures of interest.
All right, so members of council, any disclosures of interest on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, moving on.
A next order business are the minutes. I have a motion that the minutes of the meetings held on May the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three be confirmed, moved by councillor Herbert, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Discussions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Next item.
Your worship, next order business are presentations, two presentations this evening. First presentation is for a civic award to Chris Herridge.
Sneak through here. I'm going to try and stand as close to a microphone as I can. We're honoring Chris Herridge tonight. He's our former police chief, but the civic award isn't only about being our former police chief. While he was a member of our police force and, and, and the chief, he was very involved in our community. And so some poor strangers out there have nominated you for a civic award for, for the work you've done, whether it's at the Community Care Health Centre. I know the many partnerships that you and I worked on together, whether it was CMHA or a number of other places. So, Chris, we love what you did and you're honored very well on the, on the change of command ceremony as, as police chief. And, and I still will miss and I'll never call you anything but chief. But, uh, uh, thank you for your contributions to our community and I know they're ongoing. And so we'd like to present you with this civic award. And an actual citation signed by the mayor.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks. And tonight is a fun night. We have Brittany Howard here with us tonight. An extraordinary achievement by a local athlete. Your contributions in sport and your skills have led to the Toronto Sticks victory in the Premier Hockey Federation Isabel Cup. And you brought the cup with you tonight. I love it. Some people bring a water bottle and maybe a coffee. You bring a whole cup. And Brittany, can I have you come forward and bring the cup with you? And I'd love counsel to join us. We'd like to take a picture also. You've had a lot of nations today.
I have.
Excellent. And so how many people in the community have come out and seen it so far?
Quite a few, quite a few, yeah. Yeah.
Jump in, tall people behind. We'd like to put an elephant in your cup.
Oh, that's awesome.
The elephant will never forget some of you three or four years in a row with the cup. Now, this is fun stuff. Okay, should we go to the not so fun stuff? I'm just kidding. Next up.
Your worship, at this time, council will resolve itself into committee the whole to deal with following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to the community improvement pro, uh, plan project for the property at Four Scott Street. I have a motion that report PD twenty-two, twenty-three relating to the community improvement project uh, by Tessa Kipers for Four Scott Street be received for information. And further, the council approve a residential grant and loan and building fees grant for application twenty-two-three dash one, two, eight, as submitted by Tessa Kipers for Four Scott Street. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared to enter into a residential loan agreement with Tessa Kipers relating to CIP project at Four Scott Street. Moved by councillor Kohler, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Uh, questions or comments on the report? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to delegation bylaw for specified classes of heritage alteration permits. I have a motion that report PD twenty-two-three relating to the delegation bylaw be received for information. And further, the council approved the delegation bylaw as attached to report PD twenty-two-three as supported by the municipal heritage committee for the purposes of allowing staff to issue heritage alteration permits for classes of alterations as outlined in the bylaw. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor McCauley.
Questions or comments? On the delegation, councillor Herbert.
Thank you, worship. I'm not sure this is appropriate, but I'm going to ask it anyway. There's all kinds of information here, what they can do, when they can do it, how they can do it. Should there be a paragraph in here, what happens to them if they don't follow the bylaw? Or is that a requirement? Not, not a concern?
It's in addition to what's being asked for here. This is to delegate authority to our staff to move some of the heritage alteration permits forward instead of them all coming here. And the Heritage Committee has said that that's an appropriate method. But you're right, it's been brought up by more than one councillor in the past. If somebody comes forward with a heritage alteration permit and we, we say yes, or the delegated, in this case, the delegated authority says yes, and then they don't do it, what are the next steps?
That's why I brought it up because I know we've had a few times with it. So if this is the place to put it, don't know, probably not sure.
It's, it's really in the, in the, in the case where that happens, what then would we do? Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none on the report, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members under this committee, we'll now move into community engagement and services. First item is a request for a lane closure from Good Vibes Community Association. I have a motion and just noting for councils, uh, information, all of councils' motions are in the positive. And, uh, while staff is recommending that council deny it, the resolution is in the positive. And so if council wishes to follow staff's direction, uh, there should be a motion lost following, uh, the vote on this particular resolution. Uh, so a motion that, uh, res, report ER or ES thirty-five, twenty-three relating to the request for a lane closure be received for information. And further, that council approved the closure of the lane between City Hall and St. Catherine Street from June sixth to September ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments?
So your worship, I'm just looking for a mover and a second.
Move a second, sorry.
Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Clark.
Okay, now questions or comments? Councillor Wookiee.
Thank you very much, your worship. This is one of those ones where like, um, perhaps in the way it's been suggested for that number of hours, for that length of time, it might not be an easy sell. But this is one of those things that I think that is a low leverage situation where if we say yes to it for a couple of Saturdays, we're not adding any infrastructure to it. We can get it out of the way uh, if fire truck needs to go through. Um, sometimes I, I will say no to something if it looks like, you know, infrastructure is going to go in that can't go out, all sorts of things like that. I'd really like to see this go forward in some way, shape or form, even if it's not all these Fridays and Saturdays for those number of hours. I think it's outstanding um, possibility and a great way to use an underused spot. I don't want to staff to think that I'm tossing aside the recommendation. I was here on Friday afternoon to watch the, the garbage truck back up down the lane and that garbage truck takes up the whole lane. And I know, and I was here on Friday afternoon, saw their cars parked there. So I know that that passing is the way it is would be difficult, but I think that there is a way for us to find um, an opportunity here to, uh, enliven the social scene in St. Thomas. Thank you.
I'll go to councillor Clark, then, then councillor McCauley, then councillor Gibson, then councillor Herbert. Please.
Thank you. Um, the original request also had kind of a plan B which said if the, if the full closure wasn't allowed, uh, they were looking for a Friday evening, which if it opened Friday evening after the garbage truck went through, then that could work. And then, um, part of Saturday. And, and so I, I agree with councillor Wookiee that if, uh, if the alley was set up in such a way that it was just light tables and chairs and could be moved out of the way for fire trucks to get through, or even a, a delivery truck that happened to make a, an unscheduled stop on a Saturday, late afternoon or something. Uh, I think there, there's room for some compromise here and, uh, if we, if, if we talked about a, a temporary, uh, uh, trial period for, from now till, um, the end of August or Labor Day weekend, I, I, I'd be in favor of that.
If I could ask you before I go to the next speaker, councillor Clark, you chair the special events committee, would that be the next best direction then is to now take it as a minor event, event to the special events committee?
It's not really an event. Um, so I, I think it would be, I think it'd be more appropriate for council to make a decision.
Okay, councillor McCauley.
I agree with councillors Clark and Wookiee. I, I just wonder if it's possible that, uh, city work with, with, um, the applicant. I did take a walk there along with the applicant last week and he seems very open, whether it's a specific day, it's planned out in advance. Uh, as, as the application said, it looked like a number of days and a number of time, but he seems very open to working with the city to come up with something that would, you know, be, be, uh, less risk, but still be able to activate the space.
Thank you, councillor Gibson.
I'm also, I also had a chance to, uh, talk and go to the, the alley with the applicant. And myself, um, I do agree as with my colleagues that we should probably try and work with this gentleman and, and see if we can, uh, it's, it's an area we can make viable, even if it's just for a short time period for the summer months. Works out well and everyone's happy. I, I can't see why not. We can't go for it. I mean, we can, you know, like the Friday evening, we can start it later in the day. The Saturday, we can work with him on Saturday hours as well, making sure that deliveries come through. When I was there, a delivery truck came through, didn't even come to the alley. Went right to the city park block right here and he literally walked the parcel over. So, um, so I don't think we have to worry too much about the delivery trucks really wanting to get in. And it is a weekend, most deliveries are done by Thursday anyway for them. And, um, I, I, yeah, I would just like to see this go through. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Herbert.
Thank you, worship. Uh, I'm going to direct my, through you to the fire chief if he would comment on, you suggested it would be a problem. Is, is it workable for the fire department if that was in fact, would you be able to maneuver? Or would you have to have something and put, I don't want to put you in the bad light, of course, because I know the trucks are big, but could the alley be cleared out before you got there or something? Cause you're the biggest concern because if the fire started back there, you know what that alley would be like. Anyway, just your thoughts.
Chief.
For you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Herbert, um, normally we wouldn't, uh, set up in an alleyway. That is like a, a very, uh, strategic thing. If you had to get down there with a rescue truck for a, a medical call, yes, but to put a ladder truck in there, there's not enough room for the outriggers. And we won't compromise a ladder truck and crew because of collapse zones. So we would park at a corner. If, uh, if something was to happen in this alleyway, we're going to set up at this corner or at the corner of St. Catherine's and the alleyway. We'll stretch, uh, hose lines in and use ladders and stuff. We're not committing a fire truck, but if we have to get through there, it's, it'll be wide enough to drive through, but that's not normal operation. And for us to make that turn off of St. Catherine's, our ladder trucks won't make that turn. Our pump and rescue will make those turns, but for us to strategically set up in those spots, that's not, uh, an option for us.
Thank you. Just to follow, so the safety concern, right, for the firemen? That, that's the reason you wouldn't put a truck in there. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councillor Peters.
Thanks very much, worship. Um, I just looked out the window and you can look right down the alley. There's five vehicles parked down the alley as we speak. Um, I know at least two of those vehicles belong to people that reside on Talbot Street up above those buildings. And I think we need to take into consideration, and I'm prepared to, to take a look at what some of the members have talked about of some, some smaller events. But parking is limited downtown at times. It can be challenging. And I think we need to be cognizant of impacting, um, on a, on a resident uh, or a business person and displacing their parking, um, for the alleyway to be open. But, um, I, one of the things that I would certainly want to know, um, if we're going to do this is, is there buy-in from every one of those twenty-two foot stores from here to St. Catherine Street and those individuals who live upstairs that is everybody on board with this because something, they have to park their vehicle somewhere.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Madam Clerk, help me with this. I know it's in the positive. So if this report is accepted, it says yes.
Yes, your worship. If the motion is passed, then council is approving the closure from June sixth to September ninth. If this motion is lost, then council has not approved it. In other words, it does not go through.
Right. But most of council talked about a smaller scale or a more, a new negotiated piece. So we first need to vote against this motion to move to the next type of negotiation?
Uh, your worship, one possibility, maybe that council defer this to another meeting to provide an opportunity for the city and the neighborhood to have, uh, some meetings. And to answer the question of whether there is buy-in, uh, from the tenants and the business owners. If, if there is, um, if council is interested in providing a motion for, to that effect.
Councillor Herbert?
I would make that motion, we defer it to the next meeting.
Okay, the whole, the defer, the whole report?
Yes, till we get the, some answers. Councillor Peters gave a couple of good points there about people living there. Be great to find out.
But I, I, I understand the group that's wanting to do this has some urgency. So we have to make sure that we get back to it fairly quickly if we do that. So I'm, I'm okay. Uh, do we have a second or for a minute for councillor McCauley? All right. So on, on the deferral to seek further information, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Your worship, unless the members have any further items under community engagement and services, we'll now move into new business. First item is the seniors picnic in the park, uh, relating to transit. I have a motion that report ES thirty-two, twenty-three relating to the seniors picnic in the park, uh, relating to free transit be received for information. And further, that transit fares for seniors on July the twelfth, twenty twenty-three be waived and additional bus supply be authorized. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Discussion or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items from the members for this committee, we'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to the keeping of backyard, uh, hens and chickens pilot project. I have a motion that report PD eighteen, twenty-three relating to the pilot project on the keeping of backyard hens and chickens be received. And further, that this matter be deferred for one year period pending more information on the emerging concern of the highly pathogenic, uh, avian influenza, HPA one, and the potential for considerable costs and resource impacts required to safely administer a citywide program. And moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Councillor Wookiee.
Thank you very much, your worship. And along the same theme of what I was saying about the, the alleyway, this is one of those ones that's kind of, I think, higher leverage in a sense of if we say yes to this and somebody spends several thousand dollars on prepping their backyard and all the things that go along with that, then six months from now that we have a real, like, there's a, a bigger issue with avian flu and we shut it down, then I think that's doing disservice for the project. So I think although I'm generally in favor of this, I, I'm in favor of deferring it for a year. Thank you.
Uh, councillor McCauley?
I would agree with councillor Wookiee. I just want to also, uh, thank staff for the excellent report. I know more about chickens than I ever thought I would know. Um, I have talked to farmers. I have, have talked to people that are for and I've talked to people against and, and it's a tough decision, but the reasoning that the city has laid out, uh, makes, makes sense to me and I would, uh, agree with councillor Wookiee.
Okay, further questions? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, worship. I too was in favor of, um, having the backyard chickens. In fact, I've considered to be one of the ten. But, um, you know, given the, the extent of HN one, the bird flu, avian flu, um, I think we need to really hold it back for a year. We just need to make sure that it's not going to flourish because as you can tell, under the, um, uh, the, uh, structure for the, uh, the run, it's not completely covered. And when you don't have a run covered, you've got droppings from other birds, um, dropping onto the outdoor run area. And I feel, I felt that it should have been covered. There's no mention about the, um, the infrastructure for the fencing for the hens for the outdoor run for whether it should be a gauged of four millimeters or eight, uh, six millimeters, which is, which is a, you know, the mesh look, which should have been mentioned in here as well, because anyone could put up a, a picket fence and say that's the fencing and that's not really should, that shouldn't be considered, uh, a doable fencing for that. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Councillor Clark?
I still think it's a dumb idea and I would vote against it.
Great. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, just to clarify, madam clerk, a vote in the affirmative on this puts the decision off for at least a year for it to come back to council at that time.
Your worship, that is correct. We would place it back on council after a one-year period.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the report? Are there any opposed? Okay, so we've deferred it for a year. Next.
Uh, next under new business is the St. Thomas Optimists, Optimist Children's Festival, request for temporary exempt, exemption under the animal control bylaw. I have a motion that, um, report ES thirty-three, twenty-three relating to the children's festival request for an exemption to the animal control bylaw seventy-one dash two thousand and eleven be received for information. And further, that a temporary exemption be granted to the St. Thomas Optimist Children's Festival event organizers from section six point one of the animal control bylaw seventy-one dash two thousand and eleven as amended to permit a reptile show at the event. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Councillor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Is this a yearly event? We do this or is this the first time that this is happening for the Optimist Club for asking for an exemption?
I believe that it was, it, it is annual. However, a couple of years with COVID, the, the event did not take place.
Okay, thank you. I remember, I remember that now.
Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor of the report? Anyone opposed? That is carried.
Next item relates to, uh, St. Thomas Curling Club property acquisition for multi-use path. And that's, uh, near thirty-eight Parkside Drive. I have a motion that report ES thirty-four, twenty-three relating to the acquisition for multi-use path be received for information. And further, that a bylaw be prepared to authorize the execution of the agreement between the St. Thomas Curling Club and the city of St. Thomas to acquire land for a multi-use path. I'm moved by councillor Herbert, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Councillor Peters?
I, I'm hoping staff might be able to, uh, this, we've got this path that we're going, that's going on, that's going to, uh, come to, just to the edge of the tracks and that, so that's not an issue, but we've got a new, another new trail connection coming in across the street here. Are we actually going to build a crossing across the tracks? Do you know, Justin? Or, um, like, I like these in, interconnects in, you know, the Elma College property has the connection to the trails.
Yeah.
Um, I don't necessarily need to know the answer, but it struck me. Um, and I know I'm going for a walk with the, the director of parks and the city, uh, city manager to, well, I'll raise it, but I just flag it. I'm supportive of this though.
Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, thank you. Um, I think in that case, the path is, if I recall, on the east, so it wouldn't cross the rail there. But, um, I do take your point. Um, when we cross pedestrians, we have to be careful that we sign it. Uh, for example, the one, the one down, uh, here was, was a bit tight when you came out of the, between the two fences. And so we have to watch out for that. So that people don't, um, you know, riding their bike, for example, uh, shoot across the track. So looking.
Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, worship. I have a couple of questions. Um, um, who maintains the path? Uh, the second question is, would it be asphalt? So it would be wheelchair accessible and scooter, medical scooter accessible? And who's the liability responsible for if someone gets hurt on that path? Us or the, uh?
Mr. Lawrence, on any or all?
Uh, it was right for all.
Okay.
So the city would own it. Um, it would be asphalt path. It would be, uh, similar to what the asphalt path is that goes north, south there. Uh, and then because it's city land and city maintained, it would be full city liability then. Uh, so it would be under our, um, our own winter maintenance policy.
Thank you.
Councillor Wookiee?
Thank you, worship. I like these ones that we do where, uh, like at Hiawatha Street going down to Ath Park, it's, it's, it's a pathway people already use, like people already cut across the, the Curling Club's property to go to Pinnerford Park. So I think this is great for all sides. And I think it's a, a, a great situation where we did something for them, they did something for us. But I think from their point of view, it also relieves them of responsibility of people crossing their property and something happening. So I, I'm very pleased with this um, solution and I look forward to more of these. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing that, on the report, all those, so, all those in favor? That's carried.
Next item relates to an easement agreement with Holy Angels Parish Church at five oh-two Talbot Street. I have a motion that ES thirty-six, twenty-three relating to an easement agreement with Holy Angels be received for information. And further, that a bylaw be prepared to authorize the execution of the agreement between Holy Angels and the city to acquire an easement for placement of an electrical power pedestal. I move by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Your worship, unless the members have any further items for this committee? Looks like there's a couple.
Your worship, I had a couple of calls from neighbors on Wilson Ave and Fairview Ave, just with regards to, uh, to speeding and traffic volumes. I'm just wondering perhaps for the fall, if we could get a report. We had talked earlier about, uh, photo radar and, um, other traffic calming methods. And I'm just wondering if we could address that uh, in the fall to, to see what options there are.
Okay. So that's a request for a report from, from staff. Okay. I'm seeing some nods. Yes. I'll go way out on a limb and said, everybody thought it was a great idea, councillor Clark.
Thank you. I knew they would.
Anything else under this category or this committee? No? Okay.
Your worship, next, um, committee is corporate governance administration. Uh, first item relates to proposed delegations for the twenty-two-three emo conference. I have a motion that report ADM fifteen, twenty-three relating to the proposed delegations for the emo conference be received for information. And further, that the proposed delegation requests for the twenty-two-three Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference as contained in report ADM fifteen, twenty-three be approved for submission. I'm moved by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Peters.
Questions or comments? Councillor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. In, uh, section five, requests for delegation with the Minister of Education, uh, I was wondering if that we could also uh, have some talk about, uh, schools. We're, we're talking mostly about, uh, capital building for daycare positions. But, uh, we already know the number of portables that we have in the city. And, uh, with the, the announcement of the Volkswagen plan and, and other industrial projects that are, are in the works, uh, I think we need to remind them of the large influx of new people to St. Thomas and how the timelines for schools needs to be speeded up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree. So we, we can take that on. And, and there was, it did say here, and other comments from council as we move forward. So anything else you think? So anything else you think of, let us know and we'll bring it back to to total council, but we'll get a report written on it. One of the thanks staff for great, great report, very detailed. So excellent. Thank you for helping us with this. All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, if there are any further items from the members?
Councillor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you very much. On Monday, May twenty ninth, the Committee for the Community Aquatic Centre met. And we do have some requests from staff and the requests are in order for us to get into the fiscal cycle of this year with the city as to get a staff report. And it is our hope that we have a report back on two items. One is a feedback from the staff on a municipal accommodation tax. And the second being an extra tax on vacant property and buildings and both being a purpose to help finance the financing of the Community Aquatic Centre as we move forward. Thank you.
So this is a request for staff to help us with those two. Perfect.
Those two items. Thank you very much.
And I'm seeing nods. Yes. So we'll ask the staff to come back with to us? Perfect. Next?
Your worship, if there's no further items?
Seeing none?
Council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee, the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next order of business are reports of committees. There are several this evening. First one relates to special events manual and application revisions. I have motion that report S E C oh one twenty three relating to special events manual and application revisions be received for information. And further, the council approved the revisions to the special events manual and permit application as outlined in report S E C oh one twenty three. Moved by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments on the special events manual? Councillor Peters?
Just a comment to councillor Clark, who chairs this and and the whole committee. Great job. Excellent. And I think it's going to help to clarify things a great deal for people.
Agreed. Other comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Carried.
Next report relates to heritage alteration permit for the property at three oh one Talbot Street. I have motion that report M H C oh six twenty three relating to the heritage alteration permit for three oh one Talbot Street be received for information. And further, the council issue a heritage alteration permit for the property at three oh one Talbot Street relating to application H A P oh six twenty three. Moved by councillor McCully, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next report relates to heritage alteration permit for the property at five sixty Talbot Street. I have a motion that report M H C oh seven twenty three relating to the heritage alteration permit at five sixty Talbot Street be received for information. And for the council issue a heritage alteration permit for the property at five sixty Talbot Street relating to application H A P oh seven twenty three subject to the following. A that the municipal heritage committee be provided with a copy of the design of an interpretive panel to be installed at a later date.
Questions or comments?
I'm sorry worship, I just need a a second or councillor Wookiee was mover councillor Herbert, seconder.
All right. Now your questions and comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
The next report relates to heritage alteration permit for the property at five oh nine Talbot Street. I have a motion that report M H C oh eight twenty three relating to the heritage alteration permit for the property at five oh nine Talbot Street be received for information. And for the council issue a heritage alteration permit for the property at five oh nine Talbot Street relating to application H A P oh eight twenty three subject to the following. A that the second story loose bricks be repaired with brick restoration, including the arched headers above the windows and doors. Moved by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Councillor Herbert?
Thank you worship. Further on in that article on page one hundred. They it says the event, the proposed construction becomes unfeasible, the building owner must take immediate direction. Who makes that decision for him? To do that, to rebuild with new bricks and everything is it? Does he recognize that himself or does somebody go on site and say, hey, that's not right? I just just curious to see who makes that decision.
I'll ask Mr. Palmilly. It says it's from an engineer that's asking for this work or telling us what work, but we'll ask Mr. Palmilly.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's a that's a good question because it did come up. It was a there was a property standards inquiry because of the possibility for falling bricks. There was an investigation done and it was part of dealing with with an order against that property as well. So they recognized that they needed to do the work, that they needed a heritage alteration permit as well.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, the next report deals with the request for alterations to the property at thirty six to forty four St. Catherine Street, a designated property. I have motion that report M H C oh nine twenty three relating to the request for alterations be received for information. And further, the council consent to the proposed alterations to the exterior ramp and exit stairs at thirty six to forty four St. Catherine Street. And for that notice of council's decision be provided to the Ontario Heritage Trust. I move by councillor Wookiee. Seconded by councillor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Last report under reports of committees relates to listed properties on the heritage register. This is as a result of Bill twenty three. Have motion that report M H C ten twenty three relating to listed properties on heritage on the heritage register be received for information. And for the council support, the municipal heritage committee sending correspondence relating to the impacts of Bill twenty three on our built heritage and seeking interest for designation to the property owners of listed heritage properties. I move by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments councillor Peters?
Just to help clarify things for council, currently, if if a property is on the heritage list, all that does is grant an extra thirty days to prevent the demolition of a property if an owner came forward. If you remember the previous council, there were a number of properties identified, letters were sent to homeowners. The homeowner could say yea or nay to being on the list. Some said nay, some even later on asked that their their houses be removed. So this is not this is ultimately the decision of a homeowner. But in the right now, under Bill twenty three, the standard building permit or demolition permit could be issued. There's no window to to try and negotiate the owners. So that's what this is really.
That's the difference. Okay. Further questions or comments? Thank you for that councillor Peters. Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, no petitions and communications this evening. We'll now move into unfinished business of council. No, sorry. I think I have. I just think I have a typo. I apologize. I do have petitions on the next page. First item, sorry councillor Clark, first item is a letter received from the Elder Abuse Algen requesting a proclamation and flag raising. I have motion that council of the City of St. Thomas proclaim June the fifteenth twenty twenty three as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in the City of St. Thomas and that the Elder Abuse Awareness Flag be flown at City Hall on June fifteenth twenty twenty three. I'm moved by councillor Herbert, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next item is the request for a flag raising from the St. Thomas Guides. I have motion that the St. Thomas Guides flag be flown from June the twelfth to eighteenth twenty twenty three in recognition of the one hundredth anniversary of St. Thomas Guides. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Peters.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Gary, don't do that at an auction councillor.
Our next item is a letter received from Stephen Inges at ninety four Redan Street requesting that council pay his plumbing bill in the amount of four hundred and fifty two dollars. Your worship, if if council requires a provision of a report, I do have a motion to refer it to the Environmental Services Department for a report.
Councillor Kohler?
Thanks your worship. I I certainly would like to see a report come back. I think it's time that we review the price. But in that motion, if I'd like to have added that we pay the bill of the four hundred and fifty dollars for this gentleman and have the report come back. I think he had the plumber come, had the package. He had no choice but to get somebody on site because it was an emergency. And they did try to stay to alleviate the problem that was on city property. So I I think it's time to review the amount. It is pretty low, but I I would like to see this bill paid in the meantime.
We'd need a seconder for that councillor Clark. Thank you. Further discussion on that motion to defer to staff but to pay this bill? Councillor Wookiee?
Thank you worship. So let me get this straight. So are these two separate motions or is this the same motion? Because I want to refer it to staff. I don't want to pay the bill. So what do we do? City clerk, please.
Your worship, I do have two separate motions available.
Great.
So whichever way, if if we want to deal with one first and and one second, I'm ready to go. I've got the mover and seconder to authorize payment. And then I would need a mover and a seconder to refer it to Environmental Services for a report.
Okay, so our first motion is on authorizing the payment. Any further discussion on that councillor Peters?
I I'm not saying no to paying this, but I would like to hear back from staff before we pay it. You know, I can remember every year my mother playing sewer rotting roulette and hoping that when her sewer was rotted, that it was on the city side and not on her side. And sometimes she won and sometimes she lost. And I I would just like to hear clearly from staff that that this should be paid. And I'd rather see it all come back as one report. So I certainly support report coming back, but I don't support paying the bill without knowing why we're paying the bill from staff's perspective.
Councillor Kohler?
Thanks your worship. I I certainly hear what councillor Peters is saying and 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 know from other times in the past, the examples that he's talking about. But this one's clear and staff even recognized and the city actually had to go out and clear the the root cause of the problem. And it's, you know, it takes special equipment to do so. So I think you you know, the report will cover, in my opinion, some of the circumstances that councillor Peters is talking about. But this one here, it's clear this was a city issue. And it costs a little bit extra money because the individual tried to fix a bigger problem that he could handle. And and the homeowners left that no option but to call on an emergency basis when his house is flooding and can't get rid of his wastewater. So I I'd still like to see that payment occur and then that report come back after.
So councillor Clark?
Thank you your worship. That was the reason I was supporting the payment. It was all on our property. It was all on the city side of things. And I don't think the the homeowner should be penalized for for our problem.
Okay. Further discussion on the payment side of this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? How many are opposed? That is defeated. Now we're on the report from staff on the issue?
Your worship, I'm just looking for a mover and a seconder for the report. I'm moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments councillor Peters?
A technical issue for the clerk. So madam clerk, if the report comes back that's looking at rotting in general and this one specifically, and it comes back recommending that payment be made, do we have to reconsider the decision that we just made?
Your worship, yes, we would have a motion to reconsider at that time. If it's the same amount, if it's a different amount, we wouldn't need a a motion to reconsider.
Okay. So on the motion to for to ask staff for a report? Further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item is a letter received from Dennis Clift requesting the that the prohibition of entertainment centers be removed from City Zoning Bylaw fifty dash eighty eight. Your worship, I do have a motion ready that the letter be referred to the Planning and Building Services Department for a report if that's council's wish. Moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Clark.
Questions or comments councillor Peters?
Your worship, historically, anytime that this bylaw and entertainment centers has come up, it's always been controversial. You know, whether it's been pool halls or strip bars, et cetera. But I would like staff to take a comprehensive look at just how entertainment is changing. So as an example, if someone wanted to put a rock climbing wall into the city of St. Thomas, is that allowed or not allowed? You know, laser tag, this, what he's proposing here, certain entertainment venues have changed over time. And so I would just ask that staff look a little broader than just this specifically.
Okay. Further questions or comments? And clerk, if we if we vote in favor of this motion, does it give a exemption to this use as an entertainment city? Or does it ask us just to wait back for staff to come and tell us whether we should change the bylaw?
Yes, your worship, this is to refer to Planning and Building Services Department for a report. Currently, there is a prohibition. So it there is no availability for something like a minor variance.
Okay. So we know we're voting. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
The next item, a letter has been received from Jordan Lawson of ten Donker Drive requesting the implementation of regulations and guidelines regarding the discharge of fireworks in residential areas. Your worship, if council wishes, I do have motion to refer the letter to the St. Thomas Fire Department for a report. Moved by councillor McCully, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Tended for a report. Thank you. Those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Our next item is a letter received from Jordan again requesting that bylaw enforcement staff be hired for after-hours bylaw enforcement services. If council wishes, I have a motion available to refer this to the Environmental Services Department for a report. Sure. Yep, councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Okay, questions or comments on the referral to staff for a report on after-hours bylaw? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item is a petition with twenty two names has been received requesting the installation of an always-stop speed reduction in school bus signage at the intersection of William Street and Centre Street. Again, I do have a motion available if council wishes to move forward to refer the matter to the Environmental Services Department for a report. I move by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Councillor Herbert?
Thank you worship. Well, I I I think it's a good idea because since we've made two others four-way, it's confusing when you get that intersection. Is it a four-way stop if you're coming on this way? It's just it's just confusing. Why not make them all four-way stops? I think it would be consistent with the whole street.
I think that at the I think that at the time we discussed, because that detour is about to come out of there.
Yeah, right, so I'm okay with sending it to staff.
Further questions or comments about sending the report to getting a report from staff on that intersection? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
A second item is a resolution received from the municipality of Tweed regarding the duplication and use of pole infrastructure owned by Hydro One and Bell Canada. Next item is uh notification that application has been made to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission by Meltwich Food Company for a liquor license for its indoor area at a uh ten twenty, uh ten twenty-five Talbot Street. Uh, if council wishes, it can make representation to the AGCO concerning the application. Uh, next item correspondence has been received from the Honorable Raymond Cho Minister for Seniors and Accessibility regarding uh June twenty twenty-three as seniors month. And finally, a letter has been received from the Elgin Saint Thomas Youth Employment Counseling Center thanking council for the twenty twenty-three grant to the Ignite Youth Center. Uh, if there are any further items for council?
Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. I was hoping to do this under committee, but this is a great spot for it as well. We've had a very busy week last week for the Elgin Saint Thomas Health Recruitment Committee. It was called Discovery Week. And we welcomed fourteen second-year med students into our community, eleven to the Saint Thomas area and three to Elmer. On Tuesday, we had the opportunity to take them down and showcase Port Stanley, and we were having dinner at GT's. On Wednesday, we spent the day after they were done, their day at the hospital, um at the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority, and the dinner was supplied by Wendy's. Down at Kettle Creek, they had an opportunity to learn more about our trail system and our active um community initiatives that we have. They all decided to take rides in the canoes and kayaks and uh took some hikes around, and many of them, for the first time, were able to make smores at our event. So it was lovely on the Wednesday. And then on Thursday night, we welcomed everyone back to the art center, and dinner was provided by the Home Builders Association where they learned to uh create, and it was beautiful artwork, watching them have a very calming experience at the art center. It was lovely to observe, lovely to watch. And I'm hoping that my fellow committee member, Chair McCully, um Counselor McCully, if you would like to add anything at this time. Thank you.
A very well organized week, and uh the students were all super engaged and had an opportunity to see some of the best of the best in Saint Thomas and Elgin County. And also testament to the organizers, um there's a lot of work happening behind the scenes when it comes to health recruitment. So from my perspective, sitting on the committee, it was great to actually see this come to fruition. Congrats to all.
Great job. Go ahead.
And just very briefly, I would like to thank our health recruiter, Cheryl Fish, for all of the hard work that she did for this entire week. We are truly lucky to have um a health recruiter with that dedication and that much energy. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. And and I'm sure they all said, yes, we want to come and work in Saint Thomas when we're done. Yeah, many did. Great, excellent. That's what we want to hear. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, worship. Just wanted to remind everyone that uh this weekend, starting on Wednesday, is the fiftieth annual annual Saint Anne's Community Festival. And lots of, lots of good things happening and exciting things for kids and adults.
If if I can add, and I might ask the fire chief to come help, if you don't mind, chief. We we have a fire ban in place, and I think it's been a while since we've had to do that as a community. But I think it's important that we here at council will hear it tonight so that we can share it with everybody we can out there, too. Chief, if you wouldn't mind um sharing with us?
Thanks, your worship. Yes, uh with the correspondence from all the Elgin County chiefs, we met this morning. We met one day last week. Um, we talked about putting a ban in place last week because it was so dry. Uh, the farming community, there was a couple of farmers on there. They said, we're still good right now, but let's meet Monday morning. So we met at ten o'clock this morning, and all the fire chiefs within Elgin County all came to the same conclusion. We need to put this in place. This is something that we haven't done in the past. But if you look around us, what's happening in other provinces and now in eastern Ontario and northern Ontario, we're going to get ahead of this now. Uh, and this is countywide. This includes provincial parks. This includes open burning in your backyard. This includes everything. We need to get ahead of this now. Um, if we get uh significant rainfall, we'll meet again and lift the ban, but if we don't, we'll keep it in place. Uh, this is something we haven't done in the past. Uh, but like I said, we need to get ahead of this. We're places haven't got ahead of it and put the bans in place. Uh, but today we made a decision unilaterally amongst all the other chiefs in the county, just to put a county-wide ban everywhere.
Thank you, chief. Counselor Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. Just while the chief is there, uh, when the ban is over, can you just remind people what they need when they are going to have a fire uh in the city?
So it reads in the bylaw, and I I don't, I I have to have the, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but it has to be a certain distance. Uh, has to be for cooking purposes, uh, has to be uh maintained by mature adults, and you have to have some type of extinguishing uh in place, whether it be a garden hose, a fire extinguisher, et cetera. But there's, it has to be so many meters from a a building, so many meters from a fence. Uh, the fire pit can be only a certain diameter, but that's in the in the bylaw itself.
Thank you. Counselor Peters?
Thank you, uh, your worship, to through you to the chief. So chief, now that the ban is in place and someone contravenes the ban, um what is, what enforcement tools do you have um available to you? And what are the consequences for the homeowner? They might plead ignorance and say, well, I don't read the newspaper. I'm not on social media. I don't listen to the radio. Um, I didn't know there was a ban. So how how are our crews going to deal with enforcement?
Thank you, Counselor Peters. Uh, we've been lucky in the city of Saint Thomas. We don't usually have these issues. Um, people have been very good with uh open air burning, uh, and we have it on all our social media. How they do it in different municipalities, how South Hold uh does it, or Central Elgin, Dun Dunwich, West Lorne, they may do it differently. We won't uh necessarily go down and be the bad guy right off the hop. We will probably go down and say, maybe you missed this in social media. Can you please put it out? But if it becomes a problem, then we go down, we'll put it out for them, which isn't always uh a good thing. And if it tends to be something, then we call police in, and then we then we ticket people that are, they're not following this. Um, like I said, we need to, we need to get it across. This is, this is a big deal now because of how dry it is, and it looks like we're not, we don't see any rain in the forecast for at least a week or more. So like I said, we will, we will do our thing. And and again, the citizens of Saint Thomas have always been good with uh with stuff like this.
Okay, thank you, chief. Further questions for the chief? Thank you very much. I I have one other announcement that uh as of June first, we entered into a participaction community challenge, the city of Saint Thomas. Um, that is a fitness challenge uh for not just us at council, but for the whole community. You can go to the participaction website and sign up as a individual participant and log in the uh by their app. How much the the different exercises you're doing and the different workouts you're doing. We're in a challenge here with other communities as to who's fitter. Fitter, is that a word? I'm using it. All right. So please go to the participaction website. For those of you at home, go to the participaction website. Sign up. It's a real simple app. I did it very quickly, and it just allows you to record the different things you're doing in the month of June to make Saint Thomas a participaction community. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. And this would be through to Heather Sheridan. Uh, we've got to be pretty close to Queen Street, right? Is there an update on when will it be filled or when you're actually opening? I did the tour. It was excellent, so, but I'm just curious to see how close we are.
Ms. Sheridan?
Thank you through you, Mayor, to Counselor Herbert. Thanks for that question. I'm glad you had a tour, and hopefully everybody, all council members have had the opportunity. If you haven't, I'm happy to set that up for you. Uh, it is beautiful. It's looking really good. They're getting really close to um occupancy permit. Uh, usually, the property, Matt Vial from property, has been very involved with that part of the process for property. So I don't know the exact date when it'll be completely finished. They're working hard, though, every day. Um, as far as occupancy, they're still working through um interviews, through uh people, people that are possible candidates to be tenants. So we don't have a date for sure, but it will be this summer. That's our plan.
Just a follow-up, this, a follow-up, second question. And I don't know if you're involved in this or not, but I noticed driving around the city, I saw four or five for rent signs at people's places. Are you involved with those putting people in there? Is that totally not your area?
Do you mean just generally throughout the city?
Yeah.
Landlords wherever?
I see for rent signs, and I'm thinking, we didn't have any rent uh places free to rent, and now all of a sudden I've seen four or five, and I didn't know if that was part of your you send people there, or that just typically the homeowners renting?
Uh, through you, uh, Mayor Preston, they, we aren't like linked to any landlords at this point, but when we see uh rent signs, we do have staff that connect with landlords and see if we can put in place uh some arrangements. Uh, so we we have people all the time looking at places in town for rent so we can help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next.
Uh, your worship, at this time, perhaps we can go into uh unfinished and new business of council, if the members have any further items?
Well, I think we did a very good job of of new business there. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, worship. Uh, we we have um a report coming back to us uh with regard to vacant lands um later on in the fall, and I was just wondering if if we could uh take a look at in that report um the planting of trees on some of those properties. For example, uh, Counselor Peters had raised the uh the issue of the land, Joanne Brooks Park, or that piece of land. And uh we had talked about it uh with Alma College, where there's opportunities that we've got land sitting there, trees take a long time to grow, and whether or not we can be reing some of those properties. Another one that comes to mind is the large piece of property beside the North Side um Fire Department. We own a huge piece of land there. Could true trees be planted on the perimeter perimeter of that property? Um, so I'm just wondering if in that report, while when when staff is looking at vacant lands, they can be thinking about that aspect as well.
Great. Counselor Peters?
Yeah, thanks, worship. I, just in support of Counselor Clark, I'd like to see the comprehensive report come back because we have a commitment to plant an acre for an acre of trees that had to be removed for the land development site.
Yep.
So let's look at this as an all-encompassing plan and how we can get on with sooner than later, starting to plant trees.
Great plan. Anything else under new business or even old business? Seeing none?
Uh, your worship, we now move into the bylaws area. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
I have a motion by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
First bylaw, please.
First bylaws, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the fifth day of June, twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Second bylaw, please.
Second bylaws, a bylaw to appoint noise control officers being Andrew Oliver, David Sarlos, Sarlos, and Michael Elliott.
Questions or comments, members? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, uh, Counselor Peters. Uh, we're appointing three noise control officers. Do we are they working twenty-four seven? Are they working Saturdays and Sundays or? Because that, we talked about it earlier in our agenda about noise control officer. I just found it interesting. We're hiring three. I'm just curious what hours they would be working.
Lou, Justin?
We've asked for a report. Uh, in general, for bylaw officers, we have uh seven days a week, uh, seven AM to six PM. Uh, so that was uh increased by council, if I recall, probably about a year ago, I think.
I just couldn't remember what we said we were going to have him work. Anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the second bylaw? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Third bylaw, please.
Third bylaws, a bylaw to adopt Official Plan Amendment one oh seven to the city of Saint Thomas Official Plan. This relates to the new hospice facility at eight South Edgeware Road.
Questions or comments, the members? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Fourth bylaw, please.
Fourth bylaws, a bylaw to amend bylaw fifty-eight, being the zoning bylaw for the city of Saint Thomas. Uh, relates to uh permitting a new hospice facility at eight South Edgeware Road.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Fifth but, fifth and final bylaw, please.
Final bylaw is a bylaw to appoint a building inspector, bylaw officer, and noise control officer, um being Luke Chambers.
Questions or comments, the members? Counselor Clark?
Uh, thank you through you to staff. Um, Counselor Herbert did raise a an interesting point in terms of uh getting clarification on the hours that are people are are noise control officers are working, or even uh uh bylaw officers. And I'm just wondering with the summer months and daylight hours longer, whether or not there's uh an opportunity for staff to look at um weekend hours and extended evening hours. Um, and if we could get a report on that, I'd appreciate that.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clark. Perhaps um the report that's been requested that comes back dealing with the correspondence, perhaps that issue could be addressed at looking at potential. Um, and then we, I'm sure we'd have to involve uh HR in this as well, too. So hopefully staff will take the direction to bring that back as part of their comprehensive report. For the discussion on the fifth bylaw. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Your worship, I rise to report successful passing of five bylaws.
Great.
I have a motion by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands, that the report of council and committee of the whole regarding the five bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time, engrossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
No public notice or notices a motion this evening. At this time, your worship, we have a need to move into closed session. I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with two labor relations matters. A matter of information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality by the province. A position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality, and three personal matters about identifiable individuals. I'm moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor McCully.
Before I ask for a vote on it, I'll remind the folks at home and those here that we'll now be moving into a closed session. And uh we will be leaving the streaming and the on-air piece. And when we are finished with the in in-camera closed session, we will be exiting it simply to adjourn the meeting and move on or cover and certainly and or cover anything that that needed to be voted on from the closed session. Uh, so we'll see you all next week, and we thank you for joining us tonight. Any questions or comments on closed session? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.